Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a workshop to go over our 2021 Shoreline Master Program update. If I can get this shared real quick. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
So just, I'm just gonna do a real brief overview. We've presented the overview at the open house for those who were, who attended, most of the Planning Commission. Uh, we up, we update our Shoreline Master Program every eight years. Our updates due at the end of June of this year. And we're focusing on just basic amendments to keep our plan or our program current with changes in the state law. This is our shoreline map. There are no changes proposed to any of our shoreline designations. And so this will remain as is. We'll probably update the date. We, we may refresh the map a little bit, make it look better, but there are no designation changes that are going to occur. Just a quick, uh, overview of these updates. We're gonna, we're gonna look at cost thresholds in a couple of sections. Definitions, um, exceptions to local review, permit filing procedures, uh, non-conforming uses ADA, uh, WashDOT review, wetlands, shoreline restoration, and, uh, some floodway issues, uh, or updates. And so I've got the text of all of the updates on the slides that we're gonna go through. I am not gonna read all of them for you. Uh, Melinda sent a link out to you with a redline strikeout version of, uh, of 1868, our Shoreline Master Program. And you can read through those individually, or look at all the individual changes. You can follow along, or you can look at them later. And if you have questions on any of them, you can ask now, or you can email me or call me, and we can discuss those, uh, at another time. So we've added a definition of archaeological and historical resources. This was done at the request of the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, also known as DAP. So those are, those there. We've added a definition for channel migration zones. Uh, and we've also updated our definition of critical areas uh, to show that they do not include irrigation infrastructure. Those were done at the request of Fish and Wildlife. We have added, um, a definition or an exemption, I guess, something that does not qualify as development, which is dismantling or removing any structures if there's no other development or redevelopment proposed as part of that. Uh, that was in response to some legislation that was passed in 2017. Uh, again, we've added some wording regarding floodplains, um, on our fill or landfill definition. We've also added a definition. I should say, these are all proposals, so we're proposing to add this, these definitions. So a definition of Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas. Um, those were done at the request of Fish and Wildlife. Added a definition for hydraulic project approval, uh, as well as a definition for riparian and riparian management zones. Um, and those were done at the request of Fish and Wildlife as well. Uh, a lot of these areas, riparian areas, are addressed in our Critical Areas Ordinance, which is an appendix to the SMP. Uh, but they wanted to make these a little more prominent, so we've added those definitions. They also requested that we add a definition of site potential tree height. Uh, that goes along with some of the, uh, of their particular regulations that they utilize. And, um, and then again, we've made an, an update to substantial development, which categorizes any development that has a market value that exceeds a certain dollar threshold that's set by the legislature. Um, anything that exceeds that is considered substantial development. As you can see, we previously defined the amount. We have the amount there, which requires us to update it every time the legislature updates it. And, uh, we've instead gotten rid of that, and we're gonna just reference the RCW so that we don't have to update it in the future.
Hey, Anthony.
Yeah.
Yeah, pardon the interruption there on, uh, between your, your two underlines there. You probably wanna strike the word per as well.
Thanks. This is number 12. All right. So, moving on beyond the definitions and our shoreline development element, there are, it lists the goals of our Shoreline Master Program. Uh, we're proposing to add, whoops, this wording at the bottom to kind of define why, uh, conservation of, of the shoreline habitat areas are important. That was, that's being done at the request of Fish and Wildlife to emphasize that those areas are used by wildlife. Uh, 1868 deals with archaeological and historical resources. This is 110, number 2A. And so number three, Under Standards. Um, we've added some wording, uh, at the request of the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation to encourage consultation, uh, with DAP and, uh, as well as with the tribes. And the people are aware that there may be permits that are required, uh, that may be required when doing work in certain areas of the shoreline. 1868, number 2D, uh, addresses flood hazard reduction, particularly the standards that apply to development in the shoreline jurisdiction where there's a flood hazard, or to reduce flood hazards. Particularly number G, or subsection G, having to do with, uh, being able to, geez, I keep clicking in the wrong place. Being able to utilize the most current and available, uh, flood information, not solely relying on just the FEMA map and whatever's on that. That was done at the response, uh, in response to a request from Fish and Wildlife. Uh, we've, again, just recognizing wildlife value there and, and high and under shoreline vegetation, conservation, restoration, and enhancement. Uh, in the applicability section, and then in the standards section, um, adding, uh, some wording that addresses mitigation where it's not possible to preserve or protect native vegetation. Those were both done at the request of Fish and Wildlife. In addition, on number three standards of the same subsection, there's been some wording added in response to a request from Fish and Wildlife that addresses mitigation if it's, uh, I guess this is more of the mitigation where it's not possible to completely protect or where there's, uh, development that's going to, uh, damage existing. And then also a new, uh, not necessarily a requirement, but a new, uh, a new standard that, that we strive to preserve dead trees, um, in the shoreline area. They assist in providing habitat for wildlife and ecological function. And so they're requesting that rather than pull the dead stuff out, that we leave some of that there. And 1868, 120, 3A, Shoreline Stabilization. We're adding a, some wording that deals with biotechnical and soft methods for bank stabilization. Unless there's no other way to, to do that. That's the preferred method of stabilizing the shoreline and the bank. That was done at Fish and Wildlife's request. In our General Use Provision section, uh, this, the next few slides are gonna deal mainly with non-conforming, uh, uses, developments, structures, et cetera. And so we're, uh, eliminating the current wording. We're changing it from non-conforming uses to non-conforming developments or non-conforming structures and providing, um, a, a definition of that. And then standards, uh, that will apply when we have that situation, a non-conforming development or structure. Um, and that would be, we're adding the wording here. It's, I should say, that was in response to the 2017 legislation. This wording here is in response to that same legislation that non-conforming development doesn't have to be brought completely into conformance with the SMP, but it needs to be, they need to be brought in as closely as possible. So a little bit of relief there for non-conforming development. Uh, there were several subsections that were reorganized, uh, and some that were modified. And so, uh, these sections under, uh, 132D have been moved, um, to 2E and to 2F. And then there were, there was one section or subsection that part of it was moved. Uh, part of it became number four. And the other portions were moved to, uh, section 132E, Roman numeral three and Roman numeral four. And we'll look at those in a second. So E, this is non-conforming uses. This is a brand-new, uh, subsection that addresses non-conforming use, defines what it is, and then provides standards that will apply to it. And those standards were listed above. They were moved from where they're currently located. So the standards are existing and not, not changed. Um, F has to do with non-conforming lots. And so it defines what a non-conforming lot is, and then lays out the standards, uh, that will apply to those. Those standards were moved, uh, from, uh, 1868, 132D. They're existing and unchanged. Yeah, Victor?
A couple of slides ago, I thought I caught where it said, uh, section 168, not 18 dot 68, right there. Uh, yeah, number seven. Go, one more. No, go forward one more. Sorry, now it's forward two more. One more. So it's, it's section.
I, I, I see it. Thanks.
Okay. Right there, yeah.
It, it's not like that in the code. I, I made a mistake on the slide. So it is section 18, or 18 dot 68.
Yes.
Dot 130.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't have my mute. I was muted when I, when you were talking about it before.
All right, that's all right. So, let's see, non-conforming use. This is 1868, 132D, non-conforming development. Ooh, I think that's a slide that I was supposed to take out. Sorry about that. Well, bypass that one. There you go. Six, 1868, 130D, these are in-stream structures. And so, uh, this section or subsection refers to natural in-stream, in-stream features. You can kind of read what it says there. Previously, it says that those should be left in place. And the new legislation, or the request from, excuse me, the request from Fish and Wildlife is that the, we should make that a shall, that they shall be left in place unless it can be demonstrated that they're causing the issues with the bank erosion. Or if they're directly threatening human life, property, or infrastructure. And again, the, the reason for that is they provide, they do provide some bank stabilization, and they also provide habitat. 1868, 230, number four, um, deals with notice of action. And so when a shoreline substantial development permit is, um, I guess granted or approved by the hearing examiner, we're, we're required to provide notification to the Department of Ecology and to the Washington State Attorney General. Uh, that is currently in the, in the SMP. In 2017, legislation was passed. It requires that notification be done using a return receipt requested mail. And so those will be sent, uh, certified mail, hard copy to both Ecology and the State Attorney General. 1868, 240, this is an application for conditional use permits. And there's a, a new section of the WAC that applies to, uh, these in regards to notification. And so that WAC citation is being added. Uh, we've been, we've been using that process, but we're, we're just adding the new, the new reference per the, the legislation 2017. That same, uh, citation is also added to applications for variances. And, uh, again, that was from 2017 legislation. These two, uh, subs, actually, this whole thing, 1868, 255 is a brand-new section, uh, titled Special Procedures for WashDOT Projects. And then it has, uh, permit review time for projects, and then optional processes, or an optional process that allows construction to commence 21 days after filing, uh, the application. These were both, or this whole section is a response to some legislation that was approved in 2015 that, uh, makes it a little bit easier for WashDOT to get their construction underway and get their projects underway for state highways. 1868, 280, we have, um, subsections A through C were relocated, uh, to a new section, uh, 68, 285. Again, and under K, Roman numeral one, there's some, and Roman number, Roman numeral number two, there's some, uh, dollar values that are listed there. And so we're removing those dollar values, and we're referencing the RCW that, um, that states what those are, since those are changing values. And there was also some legislation in Roman numeral two, well, I guess in both number one and number two, that talks about, um, I guess cumulative construction and the value of cumulative construction. And once you exceed that dollar threshold and that's in the RCW, then you've gotta get a substantial development permit. Again, in the exemptions, shoreline exemptions, um, subsection, subsection M, um, we've provided that, it states that, uh, when you're looking at a, controlling obnoxious, noxious weeds, as defined in the RCWs, et cetera, that you've gotta go through a, um, a process with the Department of Agriculture or the Department of Ecology, um, jointly with other state agencies. And, whoops, Fish and Wildlife wanna make sure that their hydraulic, uh, permit application is, uh, that they're recognizing that, that that's gonna be part of the requirements that they have to go through. Uh, that was at the request of Fish and Wildlife, of course. Subsection S addresses, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, in regards to retrofitting existing structures. And that, uh, section is added, uh, in response to legislation from 2016. Uh, 1868, 285, this is a new section. Uh, developments not required to obtain shoreline permits or local reviews. And as I stated earlier, um, let's see, A through, I think it was A through E. Those were all moved, uh, from the exemption section of 280 into, I should say, A through C, they were moved into here. And then there were some new, uh, sections added that were, or exemptions that are added. And those are in response to legislation in 2017. So the recommendation, there are several ways you could address it. One of the recommendations was to just create a new section and move those specific, these five specific exemptions into that area. So that, that's what we're proposing to do. Lastly, we have, uh, some critical area updates. So updates to our critical areas, regulations. They're fairly minor. Um, 1859 is our wetlands, um, regulations. In the wetland ratings section, the, the proposal is to reference the most current Department of Ecology, uh, Washington State Wetland Rating System for Eastern Washington, uh, publication. They have two publications, one from Eastern Washington and one for Western Washington. So we were, whoops, we're updating that section just to insert the title of the document. And then 1863, um, Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas. Um, we're not updating this, but Fish and Wildlife have recommended that we change our, our riparian areas from 75 feet to 100 feet, uh, within the shoreline area. But for, for Kennewick, uh, we found that one identified riparian area is, uh, that was identified in '07 is not, uh, technically a riparian area anymore. And so that leaves all of our riparian areas in the shoreline, uh, within the 200 feet, all regulated by the shoreline. Um, and so there are regulations that address all of that, uh, currently on, on the books. And so we've got 200 feet that are regulated as opposed to the 100 feet that Fish and Wildlife is asking for. So our proposal is to just leave it as is. And, uh, if we're directed to make a change by Ecology, then we'll make that change. Otherwise, um, we're just gonna continue regulating the way that we have been. With that, our next steps are to hold a joint, uh, comment period and public hearing with the Department of Ecology. There's a 30-day comment period that's part of that. The Planning Commission holds the public hearing. And, uh, once the public hearing is concluded and the comment period is concluded, we'll respond to all of the comments that we receive. We'll then apply for an initial determination of consistency from the Department of Ecology and hold a council meeting to adopt, uh, the SMP. And then we'll submit that to Ecology, uh, for them to take formal action of, uh, accepting the, the Kennewick SMP. So with that, I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions that you have on, on the update. I know I went through it pretty quick, but, um, the majority of what we're changing is either a response to new legislation or, uh, some clarification or some things that Fish and Wildlife really wanted us to point out. A couple of things from historical, from Archaeology and Historical Preservation, but pretty basic for the most part. Anybody have any questions? Sure.
So when was this last, um, um, modified? Or, you know, what, what is the, what is the, the, you know, when? Yeah, when was the last modified? I guess, what are we, what is the modification being applied to?
So it's being applied to our current Shoreline Master Program. That was, there was a big, uh, update that was required by the state by, for all jurisdictions. And that was probably, man, 15 years ago or so when that came out. And we had a, Kennewick was an early adopter, is what they, I guess, referred, how they referred to that. We adopted a, a few years before we had to adopt. And, uh, I don't know if Mr. Hempstead remembers that or not. He was on the council at the time when it got adopted. But we, I wanna say that that was in '08, '09. Looks like it was in 2009. And so, you, we've gotta adopt or update every, I think it's eight years. And so that, you know, our due date is this year, so that tells you how early we got ours adopted.
Okay.
Back then, I think our due date was like 2013, 2012.
Oh, okay. So that is a little, because I noticed some, some text or some wording that, um, you know, so just some na, some, I don't know, some of the name places or the place names that I hadn't really seen used, you know, back in like 2008, 2009. But maybe it was. And time, time's going quick.
Been going real fast this year, this last year.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
All right. Well, as soon as, a, as I said, uh, a few minutes ago, our, our next step is a joint comment period with the Department of Ecology and a public hearing. We are gonna coordinate those things together. And so my, my goal is to talk to Ecology tomorrow and figure out a date with them. And then we will let you know when the public hearing will be for, uh, the shoreline update. So if that's, that's it, thanks, thank you for your time. If you have other, if you have questions about anything else, I think Greg and I are both here, Steve's here, Melinda's here.
I do have one general comment. Um, uh, tomorrow night's city council meeting, uh, they will be, um, adopting the appointments to the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, I, I believe that's correct.
So if you wanna know, if you're still on the Planning Commission, I guess we would need to tune in tomorrow.
I'll just say congratulations, Tom and Victor. I think those are the two that were up for reappointment.
It was just the two?
Other than maybe, was Rob up this time too?
Yes, Rob was up, but he did not elect to. And reapply, so. He won't be, he won't be joining us moving forward.
We may have a new member that, that was, will be appointed, is that correct?
No, they, they are working to wait and, and try again.
Oh, okay.
In a month or so.
I think we can adjourn if that, it is, that's it.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody. Thank you, Anthony.
Good to see you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, everyone.
Great. Have a good week.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good one.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.